So, welcome everyone from the summer vacation. I'd like to call this meeting to order on Monday, August 19th. Regular school committee meeting at Apple seats. If everyone can please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll read our school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. All right, we'll move on to the open forum. Is there anybody who would like to address the committee? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please. Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please step forward. And for the last time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. Having no one coming forward, we'll move right on. So Superintendent, if you would like to talk about communications?
There are no communications this evening.
All right, Superintendent, report then.
Sure. So I just left the Leominster Public Library where there is a DW kindergarten presentation and over 150 little ones. And can I tell you, they can bounce like nobody else. So they're very excited. School for them starts on the 3rd, but they're very excited. So we gave them books and countdown calendars.
Oh, how wonderful.
And I told them it was homework and that it's just begun. So they were very excited. And happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, he acknowledged.
Try not to be.
Well, happy birthday.
It's not the worst one of those kids that get too much about birth or even, you know?
We could sing.
I like other people's birthdays.
Well, you would have loved the little ones that were just at the library. Last week was extremely busy. On Tuesday, we had our new teacher mentoring program that started. Thirty-eight new staff members, teachers, were greeted into the district and supported and had a day-long training. They have another training this week. We take them through curriculum, staffing, documents, the city. It's a pretty comprehensive system, so they know that they're well-supported and we well-welcome them. The candidacy pool this year was, it was wealthy. It was nice to have that problem to say, ooh, I've got two or three people to choose from. But I believe that we brought on highly effective and high-quality staff this year, so we're looking forward to that. We also, last Wednesday and Thursday, had an administrative retreat. On day one, we joined forces with Pittsburgh Public School leadership teams, and we were over at Pittsburgh State. About 80 of us came together around a book study with the author John Safier. We worked through both administrative staffs. John Safier, for me, is one of those educational gurus. If he says it, I'm just doing it, because it has to be true. It was a very productive day, and we led into day two where just the Leominster team came together, had Leominster High, and we were still very much buzzing with energy and waiting to put the practice into place. So it was a well-attended and anticipatory two days, and we really felt like we got a lot out of that. First day of school is next Tuesday. I won't feel good until those doors open. And it's, for us, it's non-stop right now. It's 24 hours trying to make everybody's dreams come true. Between bus routes, they're being cleaned, classroom list went out. But we're about 95% ready to go, so we feel good about that. I hope many of you have been receiving. There are socials at all of the buildings throughout this year. There are various times. If there's anything you can attend, please do so. The buildings would love to have your attendance and so would the participants. And last, I just have to share. In the spring, members of Chartwell's came to the administration and asked for letters of recommendation for our local manager, Bob Burr. We said, okay, great, we can write a few letters. And then we said, well, what was he looking for? First, it was regional recognition, and then there was a national recognition. And so we said, maybe we can do something a little different. And so Mr. Burr was at this presentation this past August, and he was sitting in the audience, and they were talking about this school district. And he kept saying, that sounds familiar, that sounds familiar. Not even thinking, he was one of thousands, about 4,000 nominees. And all of a sudden, on this huge screen in front of him comes Leominster Public Schools' music video, which I will share with you at another time. So let's just say he won national recognition out of 4,000. So we're going to bring him forward to the whole school district on Monday and throw ourselves on the sword, because it was quite a celebration, but well, well-deserved. So we're looking forward to kicking off school on August 27th. So thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much. We're going to move on to presentations. FY19, it's a wrap?
Great. This was important. I wanted to follow up. At our last meeting on June 28th, it, you know, it was the end of the season, things were wrapping up, but I didn't feel that we had closure and that we could put FY19 to bed. And Mr. May, you had asked for some documentation that I did not have any before at the time. So I wanted to come back with that. Plus, I want everyone to know, we're ready with FY20, with staffing and our new budget and all of that. But I felt that we needed to just hone in a little bit more. Knowing the year that we were going into in FY19, we knew that the Chapter 70 really was a crush for Leominster Public Schools, but we all dug in and did the best we could. The city side helped with transportation. It wasn't even an issue. We knew that we would have to dig deep into revolvings to get us through and have zero cuts and still be very, very aggressive in what we were producing. So some of the additional income that we did receive, the city gave us $92,000 so that we made sure we could get our testing done up at the high school. That was a tremendous help. At the end of the year, we received...
So that went directly for prom books, just for the audience?
Yes, and it went for our testing at Leominster High School. So two grades were able to test. And all students this year, all students in the district, were able to access state testing online in the help of the IT department, because that was a tremendous endeavor as well. At the end of the year, we also received an additional appropriation of 461 and some change into our expense account, which was very timely. And I have two documents here, if you don't mind sharing those.
Of course.
It just kind of speaks to what we were looking at at the end of the year and where it went.
This one going down.
Michael has one. The first one is around health insurance, which everybody understands is, it's a moving target and it's such a budget buster for us. And we had budgeted a 6% for our year, and in the last quarter, the actual came in at 8.1%, which was an increase of $226,000 that we did not anticipate. So part of the money that we received back from the city went to cover this unanticipated cost, and thankfully, we had that. The other piece that you have in front of you, it's something that we've been doing our own little forensic on, is around our maintenance. And we watched it. The finance team, we were getting concerned as a team. That was, again, another budget buster. It kept going up and up. The repairs that we were doing, they were minimal at times, but once you look at them in the grand scheme, you can see that we were 40% over what we had budgeted at a cost of $206,000. So the appropriation back from the city really eased us into these two expenses and made sure that all of our bills got paid. And so that was a tremendous help. We're doing a study. You can see underneath each one of the schools what certain fields are costing us more, and we need to go a little bit deeper and say, why is that costing us more? It seems, you know, our HVAC, is it plumbing? Is it heating? Is it boiler systems? Numbers by themselves don't tell enough of the story, so we've begun this, and we're going to follow through with it. So these were the two expenses for the end of the year, the appropriation that we received from the city.
So that's the $451, $106, $90?
Yeah, thank you.
So thank you.
The other piece was, and so we had some challenges. I think we worked through them pretty well. We worked with the city about our E-rate bill, something that we weren't anticipating, the $265,000, but now that's a seamless process. We don't worry about it. We've worked it out. Two kindergarten teachers due before the doors opened. Our enrollment was higher than it has ever been. And when you look at the census, go back five and forward five years, you can see there's this blip on the screen. And last year's kindergarten was enormous from the get-go. So we had not planned to hire two extra kindergarten, but we had to. And we have worked with that staff to follow those students forward. We have not added additional at all. We also had special education tuition increases, and those were, it could have been programmatic, it could have been materials, personnel, depending on the student that showed up with that as well. Out-of-district tuitions in February went up, something we didn't see coming as well. So that's another good lesson learned. Mel had to learn how to do payroll very quickly. We lost our payroll clerk in November, and it was a good lesson learned. One of the glitches that we also found were the paras should have had, was it 20.5 weeks scheduled in? And 19.5 weeks had been scheduled in. The way the year fell, so we were missing an extra week of pay. So things like that had to be tightened up, as well as our continued stipend increases. We don't know who will be given those stipends, and if they're a percentage, it's much more for a veteran teacher than it is for a beginning teacher. So we really have to work on that system. And we have another system that we put in place to say, unless you sign this document and we tell you what you're going to get, you're not getting the stipend. So we had to put some paperwork and some protocols in around that. The staffing report in here, I got my numbers for you. At the beginning of the year, you can see I highlighted where we hired what was considered a new position or a restored position. At the beginning of the year, we restored three of the four deans from the prior year, four classroom teachers, one band teacher, and there was a handful of tutors and pairs. And all of that came out of the local budget, things that we had budgeted upfront for. As you go through the year, you can definitely see there becomes a hard stop. In February, we really said, no more. We need to make a correction at this point. We had several program reviews going on in place of that, and the hiring stopped unless there was a specific, immediate, I mean, otherwise, we wrapped it up and ended exactly where we wanted. We ended the year from expenses and salaries with $81.67 from over $70 million. So I felt like...
That was pretty good.
It's pretty good budgeting. It's a lot of sleepless nights, but it's pretty good budgeting. So I would love to put...
Kudos to the business team.
Boy, and I have to say, the finance team stayed on me, which is all good, but we had a lot to learn still. And moving forward, it's the same thing. So we're ready to put FY19 to bed and excited to get FY20 ready to go. It's time for a new beginning. So thank you. And if you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions or comments for this Superintendent?
So last year, we relied a lot on revolving. And you really kind of went down into the low numbers. So you're going to be less relying on revolving in that way at the end of the year if there are sort of unforeseen circumstances?
Hopefully, we have a cushion.
No, that's good. And then on some of the positions that you hired new, you figured on new salaries, which over three to five years are probably going to catch up pretty close. So those are, I think you should anticipate that. You had some savings, but that savings will go away. It will creep each year, and then two years ago by fast, and fine, and then suddenly, there'll be a shortfall for it. Unless we anticipate those things at the end of the year and keep an eye on them.
Unless people at the other end of the salary, you know, retire, and then you're replacing them with new people.
Yeah.
And if you can get that always going on, that will...
Well, the only problem is we have all young people working in the school public for the most part. And so they're all 20 to 25 years old, so it's going to be a good...
Right, a long time.
It's going to be a long time, right?
Right, and we hope within the five years, the state will...
It's going to be a long time before you... Right, Steve? 28 years old, got another 20 more years.
Thought it was your birthday, not his.
Well, the thing that we do have to watch is, we do have a lot of young teachers who are on their parents' insurance still, but the day that turns off, that'll make all of us sick. So that's an expense we have to keep an eye on.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to summer school report.
So this year, we listened to a handout. Since last year, Andy and I were not successful with the old PowerPoint.
She tried.
She tried, yeah, she tried.
Oh, I'm sorry, the other, last thing I have on the list here is the immunists. I know you just started on it, but David right now is having to input everything into it, and that's fine. But will you be the person that'll be taking over the immunists?
Yes.
Because everything on 18 now is in there, I don't know about 17, but everything in 19 will be there. And then everything going forward will need to be in...
There are a lot of transitions.
Yeah, no, and that's, we totally understand, but...
No, David's been wonderful.
Yeah.
He's been keeping us abroad of everything, so it's been good.
Because at the end of the day, immunists is going to be the savior of everything. I mean, we'll be able to go in and capture everything in graphs and everything, so that's it.
All right. So summer school is a wrap as of last Thursday. Thanks. Thank God that the schools now have time to get some cleaning up to do. But it was, again, another, I always am amazed of the number of students that we service in Leominster for summer school. And I don't even say summer school as being academically also, just the community piece, the enrichment piece, the engagement piece that we have that goes on in our buildings. It's, you know, I don't invite you guys out to the buildings, but I think that, you know, next year, I'd love to see you guys try to get out in the building and see what's going on, because there's a lot that goes on, and these kids come to school happy every day. Yes, they all got fed breakfast and lunch, so there's always that little thing, but so Bob Burr...
Can I just ask you a real question? You might be answering this, I'm sorry. I was wondering if this was included, the folks who maybe just dropped in?
He said that he couldn't give me those numbers at this time.
Okay.
But he would at some point report that out to you guys.
Yeah, because I just would want to know how much the community took advantage of it.
There wasn't as many as he would have liked. He didn't share that with me. I think of where the location was. It's difficult for kids, their families to get down there. I don't know. We're going to work on that solution for next year and figure out how we can service more people. But alone, the three schools, the four schools we did have going on, you know, we had 9,337 practices served and 12,653 lunches served. And you guys can see how it's broken down per, average per day at each school. And I've given you that information before. The first program I'll just review is getting ready for kindergarten and summer academy. It was four weeks at Northwest School. It was titled "One Funded." It was K through three only. As you can see, those kindergartners came through our doors each, every two weeks. Boy, they're funny. They're eager to be on that bus. They like to ride the bus. But when they come into school, they think the cafeteria and the bathrooms are the best thing going. By getting them into classrooms and settled in, they loved to just interact with the other kids. They were, kids were doing math, you know, simple math. They were talking about colors and shapes, and they used the ocean theme to capture their attention, which all kids love a whale and love a turtle, so they definitely would like to do that. Our grades one, two, and three each had an ELA and a math standard that they worked with on top of fluency. Those standards were grasped by our math data at the end of the year. As a whole, what standard was, were lower than any of the other standards that we worked with. And the students that came, they had about 121, not about, we had 121 students participate in these two programs over the four weeks, which was great to see. We were able to do also some team-building activities in the last part of the day, wrong meter theater, force and motion, friction speed. And they also each received a book from their reading list for summer reading, and they participated and read every morning for a half hour. And they filled out their bingo cards for their reading expectations. And those folders were all sent to the home schools so they can give to their teachers, so they'll get credit for that, which was exciting, and they are all excited for that piece. Moving on to special ed. Special ed is a unique, it's pre-K through high school. And this year, we tried to do some mainstreaming. So our pre-K was only held at Samset for the four weeks due to the police using it for one week. But our other schools, Francis Drake and the High School, were hopping. Francis Drake, to this day, they, between Creative Choices and the special ed program, every room in that place is used on a consistent level. Kids were all over the place. They had 359 kids that were serviced all, throughout the whole district. I mean, at Francis alone, they had 225 students there with the disabilities of life skills, autism, behavioral, specific learning disabilities. So there was a lot in some, just who needed academic reinforcement. So there was a lot of students participated there. And what was nice about Francis Drake's participation is that they integrate with Creative Choices. We do a lot of teaming with that piece around having the social skills and being able to participate in the activities that Creative Choices does with them. So that's also a great place to be. And then at Samset Preschool, we had 55 little ones there, Monday through Friday. Fridays, depending on if they're on Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday and Thursday. They were buzzing around there, up there. They had, again, same kind of diverse needs that were there. But they come in and they're happy just to be there and to be with their teachers. And at the high school, we had the middle school and high school all together this year at Leominster High. I think that if you would ask, you go like, oh my gosh, that's way too much. But they really took it upon themselves to endure that communication and that relationships, and they included everybody and everything that was going on at the high school. So whether it was 21st Century, whether it was special ed that was there, they took in kids both ways, and they were able to participate in a lot of the activities that were offered throughout the building. And even the high school and the middle school credit recovery, some of those kids went and worked there a little bit and then had left and gone back to the other programs. So it was a great, special ed had a great year, summer program. They also engaged in the emotional therapy dogs that came within the buildings, and they were able to attend the cooking class, the poetry, the yoga, which they found was very exciting. 21st Middle School Camp was located at the high school. I think that those are the ones that, at some point, that's the first time they've been there, but they found it, it was a very useful environment here with the gyms, the different gyms, so the ability to do things. They had 50 students from Samset, 65 students from Skyview, six through eight. And then they also had a lot, eight enrichment activities, which are all located on here, so you can read through those. I noticed a lot when I came through, the youth works crew that was with Kenny Ricker. Those are some of the eighth graders in going into the high school had done a nice job. And you can walk around this building, they did a nice job redoing a lot of the gardens, cleaning up and planting, especially when you come on the road down here, there's all flowers by the sign. So they did a nice job with that, and I know that they worked at other schools too on that work complex. But again, these students were able to, this program also took in special ed kids who were only there Monday and Wednesdays, so they came to 21st Century on Tuesday and Thursdays and was able to integrate and be part of this program also, which is helpful for all those students. But even the social piece of it is really important for them. CTEI, Mr. Van Dack, full swing, right off the bat, June 24th. And he had 42 students, 43 students coming in to do it this year. His staff, every single time I came, they were excited. They thought that the kids were so well-behaved, they were so engaged. The students were definitely, when I came around, engaged in what they were doing, making keychains and HVAC. They did auto collision, they made license plates, they decorated, they designed their own and were able to produce it. They did printed T-shirts for themselves, so they had a great round of hands-on exploratory through all the shops. And we were very pleased with the students' outcome this year around just their participation, their questioning. They had an academic piece, kids participated in that academic piece, whether it was, like I said, to go down to that middle school recovery, I mean, the high school recovery program, or to do the reading that they needed to do for their summer reading. So he was very excited about that. So that was very highly successful, and I know that he's looking to expand that a little bit next year. Middle school and high school credit recovery was, not that we like to say that had good participation, but it did, it had 70 high school students enrolled into annuity, like we talked about earlier, 100 courses for the high school and 41 middle school students with 60 courses, and we had five students from out of district. The one thing that we did like was students, the students who were able to participate, 65 to 75% of our students showed up every day. A, like Steve said, they probably get breakfast and lunch. But B, because they had tutors there to help them. Every time I walked in there, the adults were working with kids in a one-to-one basis. And so, and then he said the other 10 to 15% came once a week just to do a check-in, might have had some questions, asked the questions, then they didn't come back. And then the other 10 to 15% who kind of worked from home were successful. So I think the program opened up a kind of a door for all students to be successful, still have the opportunity to come to school every day and have that one-to-one and not the big group and the blackboard type of thing. And the ones who wanted to do a check-in were able to do it, but we had great success with that this year. But like I said, we don't really like the numbers that are participating in that. Credit recovering, we'll be working throughout, with high school with that throughout the year and the middle school.
Could I just ask you?
Mm-hmm.
So all the students who participated in the credit recovery all passed their subject matter?
With a few exceptions who did not complete anything, yes.
Okay, do we have a number?
We're still working on it, because some of them are still opened. So I don't have a definite number. Once we have a number, we could definitely send that out.
And the schools will know that they have to either read it or...
The schools who have already, yes, all the schools have been notified today as of who has passed and who is still working on it. The schools have chosen to keep the students working on it where they're making slow progress, but some of them, two subject areas was tough to do, so they didn't want to not give them the opportunity to finish that. So they are still working on it till school starts, some of them.
But at that point, when school starts, their decision will be made on...
Kind of, yes. We're going to look to see where they're at. Some of them have, some of them are illness, some of them are, so there's some special cases that they will just stay open at this point until completion's been made.
I just hate to see it roll on.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, these kids get to their senior year and realize they don't have enough credits to graduate.
Yeah, no, we totally understand.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
No, no problem.
The other question I have, you know, you were saying, oh, you didn't like to see the amount of the kids that were engaging in the credit recovery, but I'm under another, I'm under another spell. Did it give you, you or Paula or the Assistant Superintendent, did it give you any view of how this could be put into play in a regular school year for kids that are not having the recovery?
Success, yeah.
But they're doing success to just kind of...
Progress them along.
Because you, as you said, they don't have to face the blackboard, they don't have to be, they just, they have to check in every... Did it give you any insight?
So at the high school, Steve McCaughy's program is where that would be part of that participation in high school. And Steve, who ran the program for us this year, has already talked to parents, talked to the students that are in that, and will be, you know, advocating or talking with the high school around that piece. The middle school level, I think that it was a, you know, with the turnover of our staff, we, Mrs. Paula and I, or Lorraine and I, have already started talking with the principals about the number of students and what we can do to help them. And just having good conversation with them. Steve took a lot of data around what was going on, why this was more, you know, successful for them and others. So I think that moving on, this is something that we will, you know, blended learning is something that we're looking at and is one of our goals for the next five years, and we'll continue to look at that to make sure that all our students are successful. And we're working on that game plan as we move forward for next year.
Has anybody taken, okay, have you taken a look at the type of program that Edgenuity is letting students use to see if it is somewhat equal to a full year of school?
That's where I was, that's where I was leading with my question.
These kids are not passing a certain subject all year long.
Yeah.
And then they go into that, is what they're having to do equate to...
Yeah. So I think there's two ways, like Lorraine, we were both looking at it today. And some of those kids, it's not that they didn't pass all year long. They might have had a bad semester, or they might have had C minuses, D minuses, and then the two F's. So there's some knowledge there, and we don't know, because we're not... So, there's some knowledge there, and we don't know, because we're not with these students all the time, of what makes them all of a sudden go down and not be able to participate or have a bad time and they're not participating. The programs, I was able to look at the programs, and I'll be honest, it's my first time looking at Ingenuity on the programs, and Steve made a pretty tough program. Those kids worked and worked, and they covered the standards that we asked them to cover for the term, I mean, for the summer, basically for the summer school, it's the same, almost the same as the High School. I think they only left out, I mean, their class, they might have left out one or two that they tried to combine. So, the, the work was there, but we can't not give those kids some credit for...
Right.
Being in classrooms and getting to where they're at. I think that this is something where it's our first year of us kind of diving into it and looking at it. We know that it's something that we are clearly is some, is good for some students, and we understand that, and we really want to figure out really why it's happening and help as a, as a big picture and look at it that way.
Do we have any type of numbers of students that should have come to Credit Recovery and didn't?
I have, I have to say, there's very few that didn't come that was supposed to come. They, the principals were calling people for three weeks before it's moving out. The guidance counselors called them. They did a lot of, you know, a lot of things.
Those, that, those few...
Yeah, those few.
Are, you know, I'm assuming they're going to have to repeat.
I think that, well, High School's a little bit different because it goes by credit base, so I'm sure that their guidance counselors and everything like that love that. And in Middle School, I think we talked about that with them today around there are few that were still struggling with that piece, and they're coming up with a game plan for that.
Okay, because we do, we did pass a policy of, particularly for the Middle School, of, you know, you're not going to be promoted if you haven't accomplished what you should have accomplished.
But, you know, that begs the question, and then you can, you can be a heretic, I accept that. If, nope, if is a big two-letter word, if they do better, if they do better on their laptop versus in class, then you're begging the point, why, you know, if, if the ones who are struggling do better on the laptop instead of being in the classes, the other kids who are doing good in the classes, if you take them out of the classes and put them with the laptop, what would you have? What kind of numbers would you have?
Yeah. I mean, I still, like I said, still, I think we still gotta kind of continue looking at those numbers per se, but I know that we're really working hard with the High School and the Middle School principals and their teachers as we move forward in our strategic planning around how to help all levels of, of all students who might not particularly be doing well with certain subject areas, certain teachers. So, we are looking at that, and I said this is our first year into blended...
Kids don't, you know, every kid doesn't learn the same way.
No, and we know that, so...
They don't learn the same way, and, you know, the title Credit, High School Credit Recovery, or Middle Credit Recovery, what happens, and I know these are just semantics, please forgive me, I'm not trying to play games. If the name, if the, if the, if the, if the, bit my tongue, if the title was changed to make it more amenable, stop having that, I hate to use the word, that stigma, would it help?
Would it end up going to summer school?
Yeah. Instead of saying that summer school is advanced learning or protracted learning, or whatever way you want to dress it up and take it home.
No, I, I, we hear you, and we're trying really, and like I said, we're trying hard that, to make sure that all students are learning. That's our goal.
Like she said, all kids, hell, even adults, they all learn differently. You know, what attracts a kid or an adult on Monday, Tuesday might be completely different.
No.
You know?
I get that, happens to me too.
Right.
I can be fine on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. It's, 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 you know, concentration, or I'm having a bad day or whatever, but I think that if you look at our strategic plan, we've talked about the same things that you're talking about, it's nothing new. And, believe me, people that sit behind me, all we want is students to come first, and we really want to make the game plan work so that students are our first priority. So, I think that this was kind of done, we tried something a little bit different, so they weren't teachers in front of them, to get more of a participation in a success rate, but it's still a work in progress. And as we work towards our strategic planning goals, and as we look at our blended learning ideas, and we work with our principals and our teachers around that, we're hopefully next year we'll have a, you know, a different game plan as we move forward to make sure we're hitting our diverse learners.
I like the title, blended learning.
So, we're gonna move on to Creative Choices?
Yeah, I'll start.
I just have one comment. I thought, I know you're new to the sort of our program, but I thought what built in were firewalls, where you couldn't get past, you know, the next phase.
Yeah, so they have quizzes and stuff.
Yeah, so you couldn't get to the next level unless you sort of mastered that level, and that might have been, and, and so I think, Ron, the future of learning really is a little bit of all of this, and some of it will be taught in the classroom, but the teacher, it's impossible for the teacher to start every single time.
We have to be careful not promoting silos.
As more gets incorporated into, I think we use technology better and more as a resource than what the, than what the teacher, this teaching will get reinforced over and over at using technology until you get it, because, and, and because it's just impossible for them to do that. So, you're right, and I think technology will help us for the student that learns in so many different ways, technology will adapt to that student, in some of visual learning.
Ingenuity might be one way, and it might be other ways that we're gonna look into.
You know, you say technology will help you to adapt, I don't know if you've got it backwards, whether we will adapt to technology, not techno, technology is already there, they're already there. It's us that have to adapt to technology. My concern is in education, and as every, every place else, the capacity for siloed thinking, a separateness, you have one thing here, one thing here, and one thing here, and they don't communicate. That's where you have all the flipping problems.
Right.
I might be wrong.
Right, but I think we've done a really good job addressing that through our curriculum, you know, over the last couple of years, so we're doing much more integration, you know, on subjects with all content areas. So, you're absolutely right, but I think we're on the right track.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think that, and we're having good conversations around how we're going to do it and keep those students going, whether it's our Special Ed, our ELLs, our students who struggle who are typical, our social, emotional. So, we are having some good conversations in that, and I think once you kind of expose yourself to our strategic planning and what's gonna happen this year, and some of the things that we have presenting with teachers, you're gonna see that we are moving in the right direction.
So, do you want to finish up with Creative Choices? Because they know we've got more things to handle.
So, Creative Choices, so they had a hopping year, the hopping summer this summer. They had anywhere between a hundred and ninety and two hundred and twenty-one students each week. I'm telling you, they had more fun over there. I, I went over there for talent shows, I went over there for the field trips, they had some great, Mindy and I have been working together around trying to get some of those enrichment clubs to be somewhat academic, to help with the reading and the STEM things. They had some great STEM activities going on there. Steam Explorers was a huge success for them. They did coding for, for kids, and they had their little robots. The kids were engaged from the minute they walked in there at six-thirty till they left at six o'clock, and God bless those kids, they just keep going. So, as you can see, the themes each week, she does a theme, and they do a field trip somewhere, and they get on those yellow buses, and they travel all around England, God bless them. And then they have their onsite activities. And she continues to bring in students to help her, her leader in training program, she gets middle school kids to come in and just help and strive and become leaders in that situation, which she then, of course, hires as their counselors and as they move up. And they have, she even has a volunteer program for thirteen high school students that come in, they do a lot of, of some of the daily grind, the setup and cleanup activities, their morning choice activities, the assignment enrichment, but then they also have their own activities that they perform each, each week. So, once again, the Creative Choices is on the rise here. Today, they were copying papers for their enrollment for the fall, and they're just doing a great job.
What school was that held at?
That was held at Francis Drake also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very busy, but it sounds like everyone very smoothly, so that's wonderful to hear. So, we're going to take a look at the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June seventeen.
Any comments, admissions, discussions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we're gonna move to subcommittee reports. Was there any finance?
Finance is not met since our last meeting.
Okay, and policy has not met?
Policy has also not met.
Excellent, we'll move on to action items. Looks like we've got some surplus equipment.
We do, so the first one is, we need a vote in favor, the technology partner has submitted a list of equipment that needs to be declared surplus.
Okay, so, do we want to, can we take these things in bulk?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move all these to the surplus.
Would anybody else like to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Figure by the time we get rid of them, things are pretty beyond their lifespan. So, we're gonna move into new and old business?
We have five items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got five items, plus six items.
So, the, the vote to declare the equipment?
Oh, so we have that, so then we have the donation.
But what's the value on those things? And how much do we pay for them, and how much are they paying us?
They were given to us, and they're all absolutely broken.
Oh, they're broken?
Yeah. In a closet, sticky.
Yikes.
We just need the closet space.
Okay, motion to, um, declare surplus, that'd be five B.
Five B, this is LCE.
Yes.
That's now located, LHS, Flack, who has moved into that site, would like to purchase the projectors from the ceilings.
Okay.
If we go in there, take them down, pray that we don't break any wires or anything else, with what, they will pay us eighty percent of the cost of them so that we can get new for our new additions.
Okay.
So, I need a vote in favor of that.
I made a motion to approve, um, declare LCE equipment surplus, five B.
And Ron will second it, he's already agreed to see him. All those in favor? Opposed, everyone voted to accept.
Five C, we have an anonymous donor who would like to donate time and materials to renovate the courtyard at Francis Drake School. If they choose to come forward at some point, I will bring them forward, but at this time they would like to remain anonymous.
Well, I think that'd be wonderful. Ron, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
And Isabel will second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Five D, we have a vote to put a capital project to the city council, it's for the water pump at Samset. It's expensive, then if it goes, there will be no water for a very long time at Samset.
Okay, so can I have a motion to?
So, local.
And Ron will second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We keep sending them to the council, and it's messing things up because it doesn't go big. They have to come to our office first, because the council can't appropriate money unless we send it, transfer it to them. So, I think that's what happened last time.
Send it to the mayor and then, yeah, forward it on.
It took a couple of weeks for it to catch up.
So, can we make an addendum?
Yeah, we just, we'll make it to go to mayor.
It just has to go to the mayor's.
Just as long as it's written down, so there isn't a lot of translation.
Yep. And five E, CTI would like to declare the enclosed piece of machinery surplus and replace it with a new one.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed, everyone voted for it.
And last but not least, there is kitchen equipment, which the district would like to declare surplus, it is in your package as well, it's unsafe.
Accept that, move it as surplus.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Excellent, now we'll move on to new and old business. I would just remind folks that in November, we have the MASCE and Superintendent Conference. Ron is going, I'm going, I don't know who else is planning on attending, but to please make sure we let Chris know so that we can get the early bird special, the little discounted rates. I know they extended it a little bit longer, so it is something worthwhile going if you have the ability to attend. Anybody else have anything?
I'd like to ask that the superintendent invite, I think it's Susan Salander, I think it's her, from the Lomondster Dermatology Group to come and report to us, she has a concern about graduation being held in the morning and on a sunny day, and how it affects, affects not just the students sitting out on the field, but everybody there, and that, you know, the increase in skin cancer, melanoma. She'd like to speak to us about it, and I would like to have the superintendent have her come and speak to us about it. And with the possibility of having graduation changed back, because it was originally on Friday evenings at four in the afternoon.
Very long time ago?
No, it was...
It was before my, it was, it had to be, because my, it was before my children.
It was twenty-one years.
Twenty-one years, yeah.
Yeah, it was when...
Dr. Rappel.
Dr. Rappel was, yeah. To me, that didn't seem that long ago, because Jessica, my daughter graduated in eighty-nine, and hers was at four o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday afternoon, that had the microburst inside. I think it was like nineteen ninety-five when it was moved to Saturday mornings.
I think it was even earlier than that.
No, ninety-four, it was still held outside.
Sixty-nine was in the morning.
It was Rappel that moved.
I came here in ninety-seven, and so, it happened when I was here, like that first year.
Yeah, I think it was in the nineties.
It didn't go over well, and so we had these hearings.
So, I mean, I think it's fine to have her come and listen, I guess my...
My only, to continue what I was saying, is I think we also ought to look and realize that should we move it back to Friday, we will be saving money on graduation, because we wouldn't have to hire the security that we hired. We would be able to take advantage of the custodial staff that's working in the day and the later hours in the evening to break it down.
I think you would still need to probably set it up ahead of time, so I'm not sure how different the security is.
Yeah, but you're setting it up ahead of time now, you're setting it up on...
Right, so that's why I don't know that the security would be...
You don't set it up on Friday, you set it up on Thursday, and you'd still set it up on Wednesday or Thursday, so you would still, I mean, you wouldn't pay for the Saturdays' expenses or Sundays, and it would also give you two days to, in case Friday was inclement weather, you'd still be able to have it Friday, have it Saturday, plan on a Saturday, or potentially a Sunday. But now that the high school auditorium is used as a church on Sunday, and it has quite a big congregation, there's always that, that you'd be infringing on them, and they are a paying organization to our system, so, I think, I think it's something that we ought to listen to.
Yeah, and I think, you know, certainly listening to it, I, I have a different perspective because I think anybody who has family who comes from out of state, like I've had tons of people coming from out of state, Friday, Friday would be very difficult for them to participate as opposed to a Saturday, because it means everybody taking a day off from work. We also have, Fitchburg High has a Friday graduation, and I think that also could be a conflict for folks that have relatives or friends in both school districts. So, you know, there's, you know, a lot of pluses and minuses on both sides, and I think...
You get used to it having on a certain day, you, you would adjust to having it on a different day, because I think eons ago, back in the early sixties, it was on a Sunday afternoon.
I think, you know, that was before my time.
I'm guessing now it was on a Saturday.
Sixty-four was on a Sunday afternoon, yeah.
So, that's something to think about.
It's a suggestion to bring her in, let's listen to her.
Right, we can listen to her.
I think she's concerned, that's the worst hour is to be out in the sun. On the other hand, or, you know, the reason we changed it is, it wasn't fun to have it on Friday.
Right.
It was not, it was not controlled at all.
In a class with Fitchburg, and I think, just, because we, listen, the other sort of issue is I do think that, you know, everybody needs to be educated to being out in the sun regardless of whether it's at a graduation or anything, people should be wearing suntan lotion, wearing hats, you know, bringing plenty of...
We have dispensers around some of the parks. We already have dispensers, it's something, maybe we just bring in dispensers or whatever. Let's just, I think we should, she spent a lot of time, you know, with other people.
And this is a national campaign that is going on about this.
Yeah, so, let's set up a time when she can.
We'll reach out to her. Yeah, okay.
I just have one suggestion. I was looking through the Policies and Procedures book, and it keeps getting thicker and thicker with the policies, and I doubt anybody's reading these things until something happens, And I doubt anybody's reading these things until something happens, and then they revert back to it, and then it's an interpretation on who apparently violated the, the rule, and our interpretation. And so I would like to see, and I don't know if it's possible for this year, but maybe in the future, just the top ten most important things you need to know about these rules. Most of them are common sense, but I just think, no, let's read through these things. The parents aren't reading them, they're all signing off, so they're not reading them. I think if you ask most people if they've read these things, if they're honest with you, they tell you they want them. And how many, how many we added last year? We must've added ten last year or so, at least. And, and they're all good policies, I'm just saying, right. We keep, and the book is getting thicker, and I just don't know if anybody's reading these things. So maybe there are ten, top ten, everything's the top ten today, so maybe we should revert to the front book that says the top thing, ten things you need to know about this. Just a, I don't want to create any more work for anybody, but it just may reinforce in their minds that some of the things that should be common sense, these things here, please, we can't run our schools if you're not following these ten most important things. And let's face it, teachers come here to teach, right? And we have kids with special needs and, you know, all kinds of issues, but...
You're talking about policy for the parents or for the teachers?
We have a policy book.
Policy handbook, it's our handbook, our policy.
Oh, you mean our handbook? I'm, I'm not sure what, who's you're talking about.
The one we hand out to every student in the system.
So the student handbook?
Yes, the handbook. I think nobody's reading these things.
Until there's a problem.
Until there's a problem, honestly, ask anybody, and if they're honest with you, like, tell me, please, honestly, you reading these things? Just, it's like directions for guys, we're just not reading them, we're not. You two was our savior, we're not reading these things, so. I just think it'd be key to point out ten, five things, something, like just...
Or there's certainly the table of contents, which, you know, if you have a burning issue.
Right.
I just, I'm gonna say, I read the handbook when it came out with my kids.
I read mine.
I'm giving you the trophy.
There was a thing that I was supposed to sign that said I read it, which was due back the next day, so my kids were yelled at for three or four days, so I finished reading the whole thing, because it was not...
I suspect that you read it.
It was not, it was not the after dinner, it was eight o'clock reading.
I read it under the rest.
But if I was gonna sign that I read it, I would have read it.
A parent asked me if I've read it lately, and I said, well, I gotta be honest with you. It's been a while, so I can't read it.
If you're on the policy subcommittee, you read it every year, we go over the student handbooks, so. All right, anything else into new and old business before we go into executive session? If not, Nona?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under chapter thirty-nine of the Massachusetts General Laws to discuss contract negotiations, and we will not be returning.
This is a voice vote, starting with Mike?
Yay.
Yay.
Yay.